Good evening, bonsoir. Welcome to the Committee of the Hall on March tenth. Bienvenue à la réunion plénière le dix de mars. Miss Parker, do we have any declaration of conflict of interest?
No conflicts of interest declared.
All right, on a presentation, on a due presentation. La première présentation, c'est de l'aéroport régional de Bathurst par monsieur Alain Guitard. Vous pouvez avoir le micro.
Bonsoir tout le monde.
Bonsoir.
Good evening, everyone. I don't have any formal presentation, but it's just to give you an update of the airport situation. As you may know, we've been struggling with the last five years with refers God affected by the Boeing seven thirty-seven MAX that was ground because of safety issue. So we saw some flight reduction there in two thousand and nineteen. And then we got hit by the pandemic, as you know, everyone, we were for all for a good two years. Then when we started, we were affected by the shortage of pilot. My last meeting that I had with Air Canada was in November. And from that meeting, I was just questioning them regarding when are we going to be resuming with seven with daily flight in batteries? Because in August twenty twenty-three, they mentioned that it would be between twelve to eighteen months before they were able to resume with the daily flight. But at that meeting, they said that with the issues that they have, they don't see any returning to daily flight in batteries for another in the medium or short term. So we have to come up with some sort of a model that we could operate with four flights a week. A for us for flight a week, it's very difficult to operate with the the staffing we have right there. Because we have to maintain a staffing so that we could handle the air ambulance. And just to give you an idea, last year, we maintained the runway to handle air ambulance and we had for revenue twenty-one thousand from air ambulance for the whole year. It's about three hundred flights a year just for air ambulance. But we still have to mentor a runway. And we're looking at roughly fifty-two to fifty-five hundred dollars a day to operate the airport with the model we have right now. But we were able to get some funding from Akowal. And we will be getting a consultant coming in. It's going to be here on March seventeen, eighteen and nineteen to do an investigation of our airport, the way we operate and try to come up with a model that would suit our operation right now and help us to to get more commercial flight. Because one flight for us, it represents roughly hundred thousand dollars a year. If you're to add a flight, it represents a thousand dollars at the end of the year. So right now, we're operating with Air Canada and we're turning around four hundred thousand dollars a year with Air Canada. We have the commercial flight, which is the charter flight and all the other flight, we were getting about four hundred thousand dollars. But right now, we're running on deficit at an average of fifty thousand dollars a month. And we just got from R D C a gap loan, they call up to three hundred thousand dollars. So that should get us to go through till June. From there, we have to still to to come up with some solutions. And that's why we retain the service of Aviado. They're well known across the planet. They're posted in Germany. But they've done smaller port like ours before. They've done some airport in Uganda, done some airport in Australia. So they're used to that. They're gonna come up and try to to figure us what kind of business model we could operate with. Is there an opportunity like we have Porter flying to Charlestown? Porter Charlestown to Toronto. And I guess the capacity of the plane is not full. Is there any way that we could get that flight swing by batteries? That's one option they came with. He knows all the people from Porter, from Air Canada, used to be an operator for Air Canada, so he knows the the situation pretty good. He's from Canada, but he lives in Germany to operate Aviado. So he knows our region, it been in Europe Brunswick four time last years. He knows like Miramishirinu is Fredericton. He knows our challenge. And he's gonna be with us and try to figure a way of operating the operate the the airport for the time being. Because without any funding, I don't see we'll be able to survive. But the airport is still a quite a economic infrastructure. We're looking at fifteen point three million dollars a year, just the the impact of the airport in the batteries. It create roughly ninety-nine jobs. It's all direct and indirect job, but it create ninety-nine job. You're looking at for labor market, you're looking about four point six million in labor. And for batteries, like I mean, like you got Rogers Electric, you got the North Shore Welding, North Shore Laundry, Cobbo, Clad, all those engineering firm, all those micro age web solution. They're all suppliers for the airport, so it would be a major impact. So I'm just asking you guys like to try to rally with us and try to come up with some solution. We're gonna have to discuss we are funding the airport so that we could maintain the operation. And the demanding we're trying to avoid is losing the certification. Because the certification comes from Transport Canada and they're very rigid with the the certification. And there's clause that we had grandfather's clause that if we do lose the license and in a year or two from now, we're trying to go back in operation, we will need to be reclassified. And those grandfather's clause is gonna be waived, so we will have to go and comply with the new demand. And some demand could be easy to comply with, but others could be complicated when we come to zoning and stuff like that. It could be very complicated. We're getting support through the R S C. We just got like Willa, Mr. Willett and Madame Chavala was there the other night. And we were able to get a hundred thousand dollar fund split in two years. And what we're trying to do with that is to come up with some sort of a marketing plan to really identify the Batter's Airport, because there's some perception as if the Batter's Airport is being affected by weather all kind of cancellation and all that. And I could tell you tonight that last year we had eleven cancellation. Out of eleven, there was five that was canceled because of Air Canada aside. Could be weather in Montreal. It could be short of staffing. They don't say if it was pilot or any staffing that was, but there was short. So it's not just batteries that having canceling flight. It's all over the place. When you when you have daily flight, there's gonna be occasion where you're gonna have cancel flight. Like there's weather to to work with. And some people say that we should get all kind of navigation instrumentation. But there's a limit to navigation system. You still have to have a visual at the the landing. And at two hundred and fifty meters, if you don't have any visual, you could have the landing system you want, you have to have a physical visual to the the runway. So if the pilot is not able to see the runway two hundred and fifty meters, they have to turn around, even if the the GPS say you could continue, you're on the path. They have to turn around. So it's it's a perception that is being this the message that goes around that we always have, but it's not the case. Our cancel flight are below what we're seeing in other airport like Saint John, Fredericton and Moncton. So it's not an issue. And some other issue they're coming up, it's with the the land of the their runway. Yes, we could handle a longer runway. We would be able to get a bigger plane landing. But honestly, in batteries, I don't think we have the market to load a two hundred seat plane. So we could have a plane that would be leaving with fifty passengers, seventy passengers. So it would not be better off for us to have a longer runway and getting Air Canada roof, because it would not stay if they're not able to get their sixty-five percent capacity. So to me, we have to work together. We're we have to to work at getting another commercial line. There's some talk going on right now with some other line. And with my discussion that I had with Air Canada, they they would entertain a code share or a interline, they call. So if we were to go with a code share, that would be the perfect situation for for the the customer flying from Batter's. You would be like catching a plane, let's say if we say PAL, you would be able to to buy a ticket with PAL to Toronto. And in Montreal, you could jump on an Air Canada plane and would be all linked together. You would be still collecting your aero plan. You'll be still collecting a same ticket if something happens. So it's it would be the best of the two worlds for us if we could have like a code share with another airline. And having another airline coming on a coach with Air Canada, that give them some sort of a guarantee, because they know we have a loyal base of customer. We've been with Air Canada for what thirty years, thirty-five years. And we always been profitable. Up to two thousand and nineteen, we were turning over like three hundred, five hundred thousand dollars profit a year. It's just like the situation we are right now in. It's not because of past bad management. It's just like it's it's very costly to operate an airport. And every move that we make right now has to be measured not to affect our certification. Because if we were to lay off some critical position, we might not meet the regulation and we may lose the certification. So that's why it's critical. We have someone right now that's gonna come and evaluate everything. So that if we go with a different model, it's gonna be in a way that we're not losing our certification. That's the main thing for the airport. Do you have any question?
Questions. Counselor Mills?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It certainly isn't a critical piece of infrastructure for Bathurst in the whole north. It certainly is. Now, when it was running a full complement of flights, seven days a week, weren't the passenger loads like forty, forty-five thousand a year? What would they be at now, like now that you don't have that same schedule?
No, we don't have the same schedule. Like back then, we had like two flights a day. In peak season, you had three flights a day. We were moving four to five to sixty-one, fifty-one thousand passenger. Now we're sixteen passengers, sixteen thousand passenger. And we had a study done in August twenty twenty-three. They call that a leak study. And to see if people were still flying, we got about seventy percent of the people from this area that is flying through Moncton. So we're leaking our passenger to Moncton. And the CEO of Moncton mentioned that they're seeing between twenty to twenty-five thousand people coming from our area. And that was, they were able to to track the passenger using IP address and the cellular phone, tagging the phone and all that. So we're definitely, people are still traveling. But they're traveling from Moncton because of the schedule. It's not that they don't like the airport in Batter's. It's because of the schedule. Like I had a meeting in Montreal on November first, which was on a Friday. I had to leave on Wednesday night from here. And I was doing the tourist in Montreal on Thursday to catch my meeting on Friday morning. And then I had to wait till the night to to come back. So the issue with the business people, it's not like the extra night they have to pay at the hotel. It's more like being away from the office for three days. That's what everything complicated. And pretty much everyone that I talked with, it's the idea that they're traveling to Moncton. It's because of the connection, they're missing the connection to other destination from Montreal. So that's the, if we could bring back seven flights a day or seven flights a week, I know we'll bring the people back to Batter's. It's it's pure and simple, it's the schedule. And I mentioned it to Air Canada, it's just, it's just the the schedule is not helping us. And the schedule is changing too. That's another issue, like your book, if you book like three months ahead at leaving at four at night, then it could change at ten in the morning or it could change at four in the afternoon. So people are getting pissed off with that. So they just changed their mind and they booked for Moncton.
Yeah, the schedule is definitely a detriment to the airport, that's for sure. So hopefully you can find an alliance. You mentioned Porter earlier, something like that, that could work.
Yeah.
Anyway, I hope for a good outcome.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselor Burnett?
Thanks, Madam Mayor, thanks for your presentation. I sense that you're enthusiastic with the airport, I like that. Have you been in talks with the Pavano First Nation about their development down the street? To see if that their future is gonna require more people coming in for the type of development that they're gonna put in? Have you talked to the chief and and his counsel?
We had the chief, we had Jimmy at the table at many times. We're in connection with them, yeah, we discussed with them. We had them meeting minister for us when it was with the the ex-government, they helped us a lot. And it's it's broad, every time we discuss with airline, we mention about the First Nation development, we mention about the community college renovation that is coming coming up. We're talking about the Port of Beldun, the proximity of all the business. No, it's it's, they are in the plane every time, every discussion, First Nation is part of the plane.
My second question, okay, uh, thank you. The other one is about your hangars and the property you have up there. Is there room for more development? Like our industrial park is pretty well full. And your street is getting to be busier and busier and busier, would be a good place for business to locate. Have you got hangars that are empty? Have you got room to put in more so that maybe an industrial park type of thing could happen?
I I'm not sure about the landscape that would be like because because of the Air Canada regulation, we always have to do some work for reflective, they call that. Like for the approach, angle approach and all all that. So it's very limited what you could do without having your agreement. So I know there's a developer here in Batter's that would like to put down two whole anger and build a bigger one. We also have two spot reserved for future development for anger for us at the airport. Besides that, I'm not sure of what we have for landscape for new anger. But every time we build something, we have to go by the transportation regulation to make sure it will not affect the landing angle and all that. Because that's being done every year.
Thank you, thanks, Madam Mayor.
All right, Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, worship. Doesn't PAL currently have a code share with Air Canada? Because PAL basically took over, because Aaronova back in the day basically was all over Atlantic Canada. When when they went to Express, PAL kind of popped up in Newfoundland and they have the code share in Newfoundland for the Air Canada flight. So that's that that code share is already implemented between PAL and Air Canada.
It's been implemented, if I'm not mistaken, in June twenty twenty-three, they sign an agreement. And Air Canada was pulling out and PAL was coming in, coming in. And we had a discussion with PAL regarding that. But with all the new flight route that they were at, being added by Air Canada, they had to wait until they could stabilize those route. And there, yeah, there there is a code share with PAL, that's why I mentioned about the code share.
Yeah, because that that would work well.
Yeah, that would be perfect.
Yeah. When you said two hundred and fifty meters visibility, do you mean meters or feet?
Meters.
Okay.
That's what I always mentioned, meters.
Okay. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Willett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So we only lost eleven flights out of a three hundred and sixty-five day year that they couldn't land here and it wasn't all because of the weather. I know a lot of people that are doing the fly-in, fly-out thing. The only reason they're not flying out of Batter's is because they know that they can't come back or they can't leave on the day that they want to leave. So until we can rectify that problem of getting the flights back here a seven days a week, we're gonna be in problems and and so I hope that that study or whatever the guy is coming in to do can point out some some stuff. I know we were at the Regional Commission and they gave the hundred thousand dollars over the two years. What exactly are you looking for from city council?
Well, like did the the consultant gonna be here in two weeks? And he's gonna meet with our business community, which could be you guys. So I'm just to give you a heads up like what it represent for the Batter's area, the airport. And we need your support in that direction. Like it's not just the infrastructure, it's just like the it's a spin-off from the infrastructure. And that's why we need your support and to help us in the direction that all the big project that's coming in Batter's to feed that with them to just to make sure that they're well aware that the airport needs to stay and that there's some sort of a stimulus in the area that give them some reason to to come and still fly from Batter's.
Okay, well, thank you, good luck with your.
Thank you.
Counselor Brant?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I heard correctly, I think you said there's twenty-one thousand in revenue for air ambulance for three hundred flights?
Yep.
And are they all from our area or are there still some from the peninsula and Restogus?
You mean like flying from Batter's for ambulance? I know there's air ambulance in Pakmouche. There's air ambulance in Charlot. And there's from Batter's. But to tell you if the the passenger on the ambulance was from Batter's, I'm not sure. Because it's original hospital. So it's any candidate and most of it, it's cardiac. So it could be from all our region.
Yeah.
That are hospitalized in Batter's.
Okay.
Or being transferred in Batter's.
Yeah, so you're getting seventy dollars a flight.
Yeah.
And it costs you fifty-five hundred dollars a day to keep up.
Just a regular snowstorm could cost us like roughly six to eight thousand dollars to theme.
Yeah, so I guess where I'm going with that. Have you approached a province like the province should be, because I mean, that's an important service, air ambulance, right?
With the the funding we're getting from Akowal, we want to have a account firm to come up with a cost of operating an air ambulance at the Batter's Airport, then we would have material to sit down with the government. Because right now, I'm sitting down with the government, I don't have really a real cost. Besides saying it's costing us fifty, fifty-two or fifty-five hundred dollars a day to operate the the airport.
So is the provincial government not willing to give any more than the seventy dollars per flight until you provide that or do you think?
No, there there was no mention about that. But we we need to, like, we 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 need a business plan to sit down with them and come up with the the real cost. Just instead of just going there and asking for five thousand dollars a day. Like we we want to come up with a real cost of what it costs to operate an air ambulance in Batter's.
No, and I get that and I respect that, but I think it would be important to go to them for interim financing. So you can stop your hemorrhaging, right?
Yeah, that's why we went with R D C and we have a stopgap right there that's helping us. But it's to come up with all those study.
Yeah, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, you're welcome. I think the good thing is is that our C A O actually sits on the board at the Bathurst Airport. And I totally agree that, you know, prior to the pandemic, the Bathurst Airport was thriving, it was doing well, extremely well. And it would be absolutely unfortunate if we were to lose the airport. It's it's part of the transportation, whether be rail, air, especially for businesses. So we're definitely involved. And I know that like the Regional Service Commission, La Penneuse, La Cadie, and all the other areas want this airport to stay open, so they've been involved and they've helped financially as well. So let's continue, definitely take part of the, you know, the study that they plan on doing and keep us posted, especially once you get the results from the study. But how long, you're saying like, you know, with finance, where you're going, how many months are you good for? Do you have an idea?
Well, to be honest, I would say three months, two to three months. That's what we have right now at the rate we're going. Wintertime, it's a lot more costly. Like all depend what kind of month of March will have or April. But like it's it's weather depending.
Okay, and then how long is the study gonna take? Do you know how long when you'll get your analysis? So if we got three months and I know we did for the pool and.
It's about three months.
Three months as well?
Yeah.
So you may need more help financially before.
More help, yeah.
Okay.
And 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 from that study, I don't know, they might come with the idea of they they mentioned all kind of structure, municipal structure. So they they may come up with a a different structure where the municipality would be more involved than right now. So I'm not sure what they'll be coming with. Because right now, at four flights a week, it's just not working, it's not sustainable.
No, it's not, it's not, it's not sustainable. I try to fly out of Bathurst all the time, all the time, but you're right. Yeah, it's a challenge, because then when you want to come back, you have to wait. And especially for business industry, it becomes, like you said, it's not necessarily the cost. It's just the work, work gotta get done. So the longer they're there, the less, you know, they're not in the office.
Yeah, you always have someone that's gonna complain about the cost, but really, it's not the cost.
No.
It's the fact that you're not able to connect or like there's no flight that day or stuff like that.
Exactly. All right, merci beaucoup.
Merci, thank you.
Right. We have a presentation, the Shalor Regional Service Commission Community Development by Jennifer Pitt. Commission des services régionaux développant communautaire par Jennifer Pitt. J'ai une mandate Jennifer qui viennent vous présenter. Une des raisons, c'est que à la CSA bien sûr, on est en mesure de voir le travail qui est fait par le département de 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 communautaire. J'ai tellement été impressionnée du travail. And you're going to see with the presentation and what she's doing. I mean, for the finding that it's costing and what we're putting in and what they're getting back in return, it's just very impressive. So I actually asked her, especially I know council received the PowerPoint presentation, but really important for media and for the public to know all the beautiful work that they're doing. Hi, Jen.
Hi, thank you for having me. Just before I start, I one hundred percent agree with the importance of the airport for the retention of population. Not that I have to tell you guys that, but as transportation being one of my mandates, it really is important for us to. But I am the director of community development for the Regional Service Commission, for those of you who don't know me. And this is a service that was mandated to the Regional Service Commission following the municipal reform. However, I've been working in this field for many, many years. And I was working with the Community Inclusion Network prior to arriving at the Regional Service Commission. So we have a lot of elements in our mandate and in our strategic plan at the Regional Service Commission. And one of the big ones is food security. So within food security, we have Shalor Eat Fresh, mangez frais Shalor. I'm not sure if you guys are aware of that, but it's a bulk buying program where we purchase fruits and vegetables at a wholesale cost and then we resell it to our population wholesale. So there's no markup on it. So we're able to provide healthy nutritious food to the citizens of the region at an affordable cost. Our newest, my newest baby is the food hub that we are developing right now that I'm just waiting for a signature from the province to get that started. And so the food hub is a food distribution hub that will be located in Alaville. And we'll deliver breakfast breakfast foods to all of the schools in the Shalor region, Restogus and the Acadian Peninsula. So we will be the biggest hub in the province. So we're gonna go from having no breakfast program in the Shalor region to having the biggest hub in the province overnight. There's a little bit more about that further on my presentation. We also, through help from some of our partners, have snacks at the library. So for you guys who are here sometimes during the day, I don't know if you've seen the fruits and vegetables.
All the time.
All the time, yeah, so those come from us and funding partners that we have. So that's always free. We started with one some month and we're now able to do twice a month and we're trying to get it up to weekly. So there would be fruits and vegetables available for free to the users of the Bathurst Public Library, but also in Pizzeria and Beresford. We also have healthy school snacks. So because we didn't have a breakfast program within the Shalor region for our students, we wanted to make, we didn't have the funding for breakfast when we started, but we wanted to make sure that there was food available. So we partnered with our local schools in the Anglophone North School District. And we've been providing them with fruits and vegetables for their students, all with funding partners. So none of this is funds from the municipality, it's all funding partners, either from the province, from the federal government or private donations. And so we're providing like mini carrots, bananas, apples, easy to eat foods to the schools in our region.
Jennifer, before you move on for the Eat Fresh program, mangez frais. So Bathurst is actually a location which volunteers and you can, they can order it. So is it still fifteen dollars for a bag of fruits and vegetables plus your bag of potatoes?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So you actually get fruits, vegetables, it's fifteen dollars. And they can deliver, so for the elderly that they can order two bags. And they will actually deliver it at your home if you don't have a way of getting here?
We have nine distribution locations in the region, so there are nine places that you can go and pick up your order if you've ordered it. We recently added credit card. Uh, we recently added credit card payment. So you can order online and pay e-transfer or by credit card. Or you can go to a distribution location and pay cash. It costs fifteen dollars. And then uh, you either pick up your bag at your distribution location or like Kim said, we received funding. So we're able to deliver it for free for now. There is technically a fee of five dollars for delivery. But because I receive funds to offset that cost, it's free for delivery. Uh, we offer it. Uh, we have a lot of elderly people who don't have access to a vehicle that access the, I'm I'm gonna show that in a little bit. I think it's like a thousand seven deliveries in the last year. But um, a lot of people access it, but also people like our nurses who work varying schedules, who are not always available to pick it up during the pickup time, often get them delivered. Um, so yeah, that's also a project that I'm really proud of. We've been doing it for almost nine years in the Shalur region. And when we started this project, we had said that if we could sell seventy five bags a month, we would call it a success. We were targeting a hundred. Um, we also had Fresh Choice, which is our wholesaler, who didn't come to the Shalur region at all at that time. So I had to kind of beg and plead with them to come here because they have the highest quality at the lowest cost for the for the produce. So they agreed to come and I was at that point willing to put in my own money if I didn't sell enough produce to meet their minimum order. I was like, if I have to do it, that's what I'll do, but I need them to come. And now Fresh Choice offers services, again, best quality, lowest price wholesaler, comes sends two trucks a day to the Shalur region for our local businesses. So there is always kind of a an economic offset to the community development, right? It's it's not just, it's not just all feeding the poor kids at school.
Thank you.
Yeah. And you guys are, it's open to everybody. This is not a program where we ask to see income statements or that you need to show need. I- i- it's just open to everyone. Um, it's it's just a great project. We have over forty volunteers monthly that come and help us with Eat Fresh. I- i- it's really great. If you ever want to come out, we're at the Spaltec in Beresford, third Wednesday of the month. Come see, it's a lot of fun.
I volunteered at the beginning when I became mayor and about one year into being mayor, I just got so busy. But I was there almost every sec- uh, third Wednesday, yeah.
We have a lot of our newcomers who will come as well, who are learning the language skills and learning either English or French and that are trying to get jobs within our region, who come and volunteer with us. And it's very, very helpful. They get that social interaction. They get to practice their English and or French. Um, i- i- it's just, it's amazing. We have kids from the high school who are going through the alternative learning program who come and volunteer with us. Um, it gives them work experience. Just as a kind of a side note, we had a student through the Alternative Learning Program who came to volunteer with us, who was struggling. Um, we didn't think he was gonna finish high school and he was trying to find a part-time job and really had a hard time. So he was volunteering with us and because of that experience, he was able to get a full-time job at SoBe's. So now we have a, we have a a young man who was struggling that we didn't think was going to be able to get a job, who would maybe be dependent on the system over many years. And now he's working full-time and really making a go of it. So it's really great to see. Um, so this is the program that I was telling you about a second ago, that will end up being the biggest food distribution hub in the province. Um, so this would be a universal breakfast program that we'll be offering um, in forty seven schools and again, within these three regions. Um, since I've developed this slide, we have had some interest from the region of Miramichi uh, to come on board with us. So that may happen as well, but we're still uh, still embryonicary as far as the planning for that goes. But um, it's really impressive to see. We also received a donation of a refrigerated vehicle uh, from the Brewer Foundation and we're very thankful for that. But that's gonna allow us to do all these routes and get the food out to um, all of our schools. Again, as far as what the investment is for the city of Batters for this program, it's sort of like an in-kind uh, contribution from the Regional Service Commission because the only cost to you guys is my salary. Well, part of it, my, the part of my salary that goes towards the food hub. So here we go with Eat Fresh. Kim was talking about it. So it's our built ba- bulk buying initiative. We sold six thousand one hundred and seventy seven bags in twenty twenty four. Uh, again, I wanted to do a hundred a week, so I've surpassed that. Uh, eight distribution centers on there. Again, since I developed this slide, we've added a new one in Alaville. So we have nine now. Uh, three hundred and fifty volunteer hours a month. Uh, and it works out to about a savings of a hundred and twenty four thousand dollars a year for our participants. So the way that we work that out is every couple of months, we kind of test our bag versus what it would cost in the grocery stores. So we take what we have available in our Eat Fresh bag and we go to a local grocery store and see what it would cost to purchase it there. And then we also go online and use that like a sales app, right? To see if I bought all of these items at different stores on sale, what it would cost. And we always see that it's just about double the cost. Um, so again, I was talking about these projects earlier. So through Manger Frais has grown and these are the projects that we were able to develop with it. So again, the snacks at the library and the healthy snacks at school. All right. So this is our regional plan. This is um, what we have done within our uh, service that are projects that we've developed with all of our partners. So some of these part projects were lead and some of them were just participating in. But it's the regional community development plan. So first of all, we have the mapping of community initiatives and assets. Um, that one was fairly easy because it was something that was already done before we were integrated into the Regional Service Commission. So it's just a matter of keeping it updated and we have a great partnership with public health to help us do that. We also have the promotion of two one one. Um, that's a little bit of a struggle. Uh, two one one, there's a lot of promotion, but it's still something that not a lot of people know about. But just like nine one one is for emergencies and five one one is for road conditions. Two one one is for um, any social services that you might need. So housing uh, for food, for transportation, what it might be. You can call two one one and they can help you. We've also developed a suicide prevention toolbox. Um, we also have some amazing uh, intergenerational activities to support vulnerable seniors. Uh, a lot of that work is done with Audrey Ronalds through B H S. Um, we have Planet Youth Shalaw, which is an incredible opportunity for our region to have Planet Youth. I encourage you all to check out their Facebook page. So it's Planet Janes Shalaw, Planet Youth Shalaw. Um, we're hoping to see some really great things come from that in the near future. Um, we also have a partnership with Pabino that we're reducing barriers to access to sports and recreation for the youth in the First Nation community. Um, it's been really great to see the amazing um, participation in that project uh, by everyone in that community has been, has been really great. Um, and it really helps to um, strengthen those relationships. We also have um, Shalaw volunteers. So it's a Benevoite Shalaw volunteer. And this is a uh, volunteer matching program that we developed. So we have several partners within the community. We have this logo. Um, and when you click on it, it brings you to a, an online form that you can fill out if you're interested in doing volunteer work. And then we have partners that have access to that list. So like Rotary Rib Fest, Hospitality Days, like all of the big ones. And then even a lot of smaller ones um, uh, can access that list if they want to find volunteers for their initiatives. We also partner with emergency measures with that list. So these people are a list of people that we'd be able to call on if there was an emergency situation. And we needed uh, non-emergency related volunteers. Then we have transportation. So as you know, we're in the process right now of working towards our public transit system. But prior to that, and as we still have it now, is our Dial-A-Ride service. So Dial-A-Ride is a program where we connect volunteers in the community who drive people to appointments to meet their needs. So whether it be the groceries or the doctors or, you know, um, we've done funerals, whatever it might be. We also have a wheelchair adapted vehicle for people who have reduced mobility. But we did a hundred and seven uh, drives in two thousand twenty four with nine, one thousand nine hundred and twenty food deliveries. So most of those food deliveries are through Eat Fresh. Um, this is a program that the people who use it are not people who tend to speak up. But if I could speak in their name, it's definitely something that's life-saving for them. Then of course, the famous bus service. Um, this is a project that we get a lot of questions about. Uh, but we have the pilot project that we're expecting to start this year in twenty twenty five until twenty twenty eight. Uh, as you all know, we're in the process of going to the um, uh, Le Fond d'Empreinte de Capito, okay? Uh, for the, for the, for the buses, then we'll go to tender. Uh, we're working with partners in their province to see how they did things, right? So that we can base it on best practice. So things are moving forward. We're just following the procedures. Public safety. So in public safety, that's another one of our mandates. Um, we had three um, three pillars in our strategic plan. Two of those have returned to the municipality since the development of the strategic plan at the Regional Service Commission. But one of them that was a project that we had started prior to those changes, so we're continuing it now. And it's the Shalur Emergency Kit. So this is a kit that we received funding uh, from various partners. And our intention is to ensure that our population is as ready as possible within an emergency situation. And we based it on what we learned during the ice storm in the Acadian Peninsula a few years ago. So these kits come with a radio, um, and we're used to seeing the crank radios, but this one is solar powered. So what that does is, uh, one of the big issues was communication in and out for people who didn't have power in the peninsula. So this radio allows you to charge your cellphone. So it would allow us to communicate into the homes via the radio and it would allow them to communicate out by being able to charge their cellphone with the radio. We also partnered with uh, what was then the municipality of Beresford um, for Frigo Med, which is a project where people can write all of their health information on a little uh, a document that we prepared and keep it in their fridge. All of our first responders are aware of it. They get a sticker for their door and their fridge. Then we have information about seventy two hour preparedness, two one one, of course. And there's a carbon monoxide detector, uh, that's good for ninety days because that was another big problem out of the ice storm was people that were getting uh, poisoning from the carbon monoxide because of using alternative heat sources within their homes. Our intention is long-term and this is all dependent on funding, but our intention is to have one of these kits in every household of the Shalur region. We have a no end date again because it's dependent on available funding. So what we've done is we've started with the people who live the most remote and the most vulnerable. So our seniors and our people who live further away from services on non-um, emergency routes. Sports, it's a, that makes me laugh. Sorry, I just realized. Sports, recreation and culture infrastructure and it says cult, so that just made me chuckle, sorry. We're not creating a cult, I promise. Um, this is a booklet that we prepared and published and it had a list, um, I think you may have seen it. There's some at the library. There were some at the city hall here. There's some at all the other public libraries. Uh, I want to say twelve thousand copies went out into the mail to um, citizens of the Shalur region. Uh, so it had a list of all our beaches, all our parks, all our walking trails, our sports uh, associations, um, different um, uh, recreation opportunities, cultural organizations. Uh, we also, of course, took the opportunity to advertise for Eat Fresh. Uh, Tourist Shalaw made a nice big centerfold with a bunch of activities to do with the initial origin in our booklet. So that was published. That one was for twenty three, twenty four. So we've applied for funding to renew it this year. Um, and our intention is to, if if we get the funding will be to republish and kind of go through the same process of distributing it um, throughout the region. Once the new website for the Regional Service Commission is up and running, we'll also have a digital format of it. And if the city um, is interested, we could also share it with you to place on your website uh, once it's um, renewed. All right. So where do I get all the money for this? So it's not all coming out of your coffers, I promise. So if we look here, so these are our financial partners. Um, I re- definitely have to big shout out to these guys. It's been really great working with amazing people who believe in our cause. So we have uh, E S I C, which is the Economic and Social Inclusion Corporation of New Brunswick, uh, for hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. We have the Brewer Foundation who uh, donated the reefer truck, which was valued at eighty thousand. Public Safety Canada. Um, for those of you who aren't aware, that's a big chunk of change. And Public Safety Canada has um, based on their studies and statistics, they determined that the Shalur region and the Restogus regions were at very high risk for our youth being involved in ga- uh, gang activity and um, firearms. So we were selected to receive funding to create initiatives to reduce the risk of our youth being involved um, in that illegal or dangerous activity. Um, Uni, of course, has helped us. Uh, we raised some money through fundraising, New Horizons, which is a federal program. Uh, R D C, uh, the Federal Transportation Initiative, the, which is for the buses. And then E L G for fifty thousand for a total of just about one point four million. And then you're all wondering, how much did you guys pay? So this is what was um, the portion of the contribution from Batters to the R S C to pay for all of these services. So for eleven thousand dollars, all of those services are being offered to your citizens. And really, at the end of the day, m- most of that just goes to help offset a tiny cost of salary. So coming up, because you know, we don't have enough on our plates as it is. Um, we're going to, we've received the uh, study on housing from the Economic Development Department. And so our next step will be to do the study relating to affordable housing within the Shalur region. Um, we also uh, have applied for funding for a feasibility study for a new youth center or initiative since we lost the youth center in Batters. Um, for those of you who know about CoAction, we have a Stephen who sits on the committee. Uh, we're gonna be working closely with CoAction in the next year because we were able to secure some funding for them. Um, we also have the renewal again of the sports and leisure booklet. Um, we also have a new project with the Community College for Food Security. So ensure that our uh, college students all have sa- ac- have access to affordable food. And then we have a program for homeless backpacks. So these are backpacks that are gonna be filled with essential items for our homeless population that we'll be distributing. And we're doing that again, it's a a very, um, I guess it wouldn't be intergenerational, but we're we're involving our high school students um, to help create awareness um, through the delivery of those backpacks. That'll be done through partners in a very safe and structured manner, like we're not taking the kids out to the camps. It like it, it's gonna be partnered with social development for that. So does anybody have any questions?
All right. So CoAction.
Yes.
Um, just as a reminder, and I'm sure council knows, we have four students from E S N, four students from B H S that sits with Counselor Legacy and Audrey and Representative. And ca- are, can you share how much you went and got for them in in grants? Are you allowed?
I can, yes. Uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be fair to the, to the students on that, that, that ta- or on that table. They really did do a lot of work and helped me develop it. Um, I just helped tweak their grant proposal, but we went and secured fifty five thousand dollars for them.
For provincial government? That's just for?
Federal.
A federal government, yeah. So uh, it says a lot in the fact that they've initiated it and they worked on the proposal. So imagine the experience that they're gaining and then for you to be able to help them. So we do have some questions, Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Your Worship. Hi, Jen.
Hi.
For the food hub initiative, where's that mu- how much does it cost, first of all, to run that program for a year? And where's the money coming from for that program?
Right, okay. So the way that the food hub uh, is set up is that we're a distribution center. So the food co- the funding for the food comes from the province. And it all goes to Food Depot Alimata, which is um, they're the, the organization that received the contracts to provide breakfast to all of the schools. They're not able to serve the Shalur region, Restogus, Acadian Peninsula. They don't have the infrastructure.
Right.
So we've been working with them for the past two years to try to get these, this program in Shalaw and they just didn't have the capacity. So the way to overcome that was to have this distribution hub in our region. So all of the food that's gonna be redistributed will be paid for by the province through Food Depot Alimata. We um, have tweaked their system a little bit to give ourselves a little bit more independence and to provide better quality food. So for fruits and vegetables, instead of them coming from their distribution, going to Moncton, from Moncton, coming here, from here, going to the schools, we're gonna be ordering it directly through our uh, wholesalers so that it'll be fresher when it gets to the schools. Um, and then when it comes to the delivery, all of that is accounted for in the cost of offering the project through Food Depot Alimata. So we just rebuild that mileage to um, Food Depot Alimata. Uh, part of the salary of the coordinator and the driver for the deliveries is also included in the project. Uh, we also, I don't have that on my sheet here, but I can provide you that information, not a problem. But we But we have um, we have secured funding um from other sources. Part of the ESIC funding is going towards uh offsetting the cost of salaries. And then there is a contribution from the other two regions um that's going to come to the hub because we are offering the service in their communities.
Good to know. So it's the province that's funding it?
For the most part.
Because like in May of last year, the federal government announced uh a breakfast program. They, they announced that down in the Carricket region.
Yep.
And I've, I like, I haven't heard of anybody that's received any funding from that program that was, that was announced. So you're all province, nothing federal.
My understanding is that the funding from the federal, and I could be wrong, so please don't quote me. I know we're on live, but my understanding is, my understanding was that that funding was brought to the province and then from the province redistributed.
Is that how it was just?
That was my understanding, but I can, I can confirm that for you.
Could be.
But yeah, so right now, all we're waiting for is that announcement that happened in um.
May of last year.
No, the announcement that just happened uh last month, the month before, it was in Chediac.
Yes.
Yeah, for the, for the funding. Um, we're just waiting for the final signature on that funding so that we can start operating.
Okay, great, thank you.
Councillor Burnett?
Uh, thanks, Madame. Thanks, your presentation. There's a lot to absorb.
Yeah.
I read it today and have to read it again. Uh, one I have is a question on uh the CCNB.
Yep.
Uh, I live uh toward train station. There's a lot of students that are living in different apartments there, et cetera. And I hear stories from uh so some of the people that, people are coming in from around the world and don't know how to handle the food. And uh, for example, I heard in one house where they brought some meat home from the grocery and put it in the cupboard and wonder why it didn't stay well. You know, so are you able to help these students? Because it's not their fault. They, I mean, they're coming in without the knowledge of how to handle food, how to prepare food. You know, like uh remember the home ec courses in school.
Right, right. But they wouldn't have had home ec classes using our foods, right? No, I agree. There, there are two individuals who work for the Community College, uh one on each campus, who are working with the international students. Um, and they do a lot of work uh i- in line with that. There's also the Multicultural Association who has in the past put on activities where they show people to different things. Like so one, how to, how to um prepare and store food you would get in Canada. But also how, i- it doesn't always, not always uh palpable to their palate, right? So how to take our food and kind of transform it so that they enjoy it. So that's really a responsibility of the Community College, but that's something that I, I could um definitely bring up. And um ask if they would like to work on a project relating to that.
Yeah, I think, I think it's necessary, you know, to help them out. It's not their fault.
Oh, no, absolutely not.
They just need help.
Right.
Thank you. Thank you.
If I can add to that, because uh I know when they have new students coming in, you know, they, they have information sessions. And I know, I know I attend, um, our police department attends. So there's all kinds of information and throughout the year, even students coming in in January. But if these students do not show up at these sessions, they do not learn the important part of all of this. So we've actually talked about that, that it would almost have to be done in classes because they're already in class. Because it's so important, you know, you can't put your bed next to the heater. You know, it's, all these are small stuff and I know that as being director for three years at the Multicultural Association. You know, it's, it's hot as heck in Senegal. So where you're coming here, you don't realize and they put the bed next to the heater. So there is a lot of work and that's why actually now at the Community College, they have employees hired just for that. To try to educate them as much as they possibly.
Right. We've done a workshop in the past on how to walk on ice.
Yeah.
Which doesn't seem like something that we had to teach people, but somebody who's never seen ice, who's never had to deal with ice, doesn't realize how hard it is to walk on ice. Right? Just walk like a penguin.
Yeah. Exactly. Well, thank you very much, Jennifer, for taking the time out of your busy schedule. I know you're in the peninsula this morning. So rush here to be here tonight. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for having me. And also, if anybody, like, I'm always available, just give me a call. I'm at the Service Commission. I'm fairly easy to get a hold of. I'm uh always willing to chat and hear new ideas. So if anytime anybody wants to reach out, please feel free.
And Eat Fresh et Manger Frei peuvent aller sur le site.
Manger Frei, shut up. Eat Fresh, you can go to our, our um website. Again, you can pay credit card now or uh e-transfer. You can order up to ten bags. Um, that's a lot of potatoes, though. Uh, just be warned. Um, yeah, for sure. Like, I absolutely encourage everybody to participate. And like I said, it's not just for a certain group of people. It's open. The more people who buy, the better cost I get in my order. So the more people who purchase, the better it is for everybody.
Alright, thank you so, so much. Okay, so we're going to go under new business, Grant Committee Recommendation.
Uh, I'll start off just by saying that I met with the Grant Committee, well, two members of the Grant Committee uh about two weeks ago, I believe. So councillor uh Burnett and councillor uh LeBlanc. And I, we went through uh the requests that have come in since the previous time we talked about this. So we did have a handful come in since then. Um, and like I've mentioned before, it is steady. They come in solid. So you'll see it come up quite a few times throughout the year. Uh, but I will pass off to uh the councillors who were in the meeting just to kind of explain um their reasonings and the amounts that were given.
Okay, so I'll give the mic to councillor LeBlanc, councillor Burnett.
Okay, there you go. So if we look at the, the, what we looked at the other day was uh, no, Amy, correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, but it was mostly the, it was the Harvest Fest in Corvette event, uh the Bathurst Snow Bears. And then we had the Jeu de la Cadie, Elvino Gala, those uh events, I think we had four of them in one request, and then the Gauwenbray Golf Tournament is those are the ones we're discussing today. Perfect. Alright, well, they're, they're pretty straightforward. Uh, for the uh, I'll start right at the beginning. The Harvest Fest Corvette event, we, by the way, we absolutely love. Um, we uh, we looked at that and we again wanted to distribute the monies and to make sure we had something still available if other requests comes in, came in. So we gave them three thousand, which covered all their events, but I think but one in particular. I think you know about it, councillor Willett. Uh, so that should cover, uh, like I said, all their, their events, uh, other than one, which is an onsite event with costs here. Then we have the Bathursts uh.
And the promo material.
And the, yeah, the pro- exactly. Thank you, councillor Burnett. Step in at any time.
You're welcome, yeah, yeah.
Uh, we also had the Snow Bear uh Festival. Now, we're all, I think everyone here, uh, not the, well, not the festival, but the skiing, skiing and that group. And I think everyone here knows about it, knows what it brings to the community and there are skiers coming from all over uh Eastern Canada that come and participate. And a lot of them, most of them almost are youth. Uh, and we know they will need that piece of equipment within the next, I think, five years is when they said. And that's a lot of money. Uh, it's going to be probably about half a million bucks. So what we thought we would do is at least start off with now and set money aside right away. Give them ten thousand right away uh to put into an account, maybe an opportunity to go after grants and stuff. We'd like to be able to do this annually, but we do realize there are elections next year. And no matter what we decide, could be reverse moving forward uh or stop. So we said, we're here this year, we're going to at least put ten thousand in an account for now. For if ever they need to go after grants for other vehicle or RDC, whatever. And uh hopefully we'll be able to, every year, put money into an account. So when it gets to that point where they have to purchase, that we will, as a city, have a, a certain amount in there in the pot and already be able to help them. And maybe that'll be the difference between them being able to get the financing or the, the whatever is left to get, to get the uh product.
I actually invited them to be here this evening because I did speak with them because the last time we chatted, we thought, you know, putting the funds in the reserve. They actually have their own account just for that. They've already started some of the fundraising. So they do have an account that's separate from their overall operational account. And that money is just to raise the money for the equipment. So they are with us this evening in case we do have questions.
Good, so we, that ten thousand is exactly for that account. Right, councillor Burnett, that's what we had in mind, right?
We didn't uh want volunteers to be going to their own accounts to uh take money to travel, find money. So this money can be used by them, uh, hopefully to get more monies uh for a five-hundred-thousand-dollar piece of gear. And then probably there's going to be a need from council in the future for more monies.
So continuing, uh, then we moved on to the Jeu de la Cadie. There was a uh uh, a requ- well, not, there was a request, but there was no set amount and it was to help families uh have the opportunity to send their children uh to the Jeu de la Cadie. And I think, again, we are certainly proponents of that. Um, so we put a thousand, we gave a thousand dollars there. And uh hopefully uh everyone will support that. I can't imagine not, but it'll be council's decision. Then we had a request for four different events. I believe this came from the Chamber of Commerce. Um, we obviously are huge supporters of the chamber. So when it came to the Elvino, we had given a thousand dollars last year. We thought we'd give the same thing again. This year is a great event. It's in sponsorship, of course. Uh, then there was a gala. Uh, we uh, we had given fifteen hundred last year, but we went for the two-thousand-dollar package that they had this year. There was different.
So we can sponsor one of the winners.
Correct.
Yeah.
Uh, and then there was a golf event where they had uh, in the golf, what we wanted, we uh, our suggestion there was to actually give a uh, give gifts.
We do. They do.
And that's what we, that's where we wanted to go again, is uh gifts, um, instead of, and you have money uh for that one. And the Christmas cocktail, uh, we gave uh, we, 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 we went again with the, the, the recommendation. I think most people on council agreed, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars is a good amount there. So we, we put that in there. And then it came down to the requests uh for the Gauwenbray uh Golf Tournament, uh, to help with the volunteer work. And that, again, uh, I mean, that was just a no-brainer where that bring, I think they were talking about a hundred and fifty-three, a hundred and fifty-six kids.
Yeah.
And we all know what Gauwenbray does for this community anyhow. Uh, so on top of all that, the ten thousand dollars to us was a, a no-brainer for the event it's bringing.
Ms. Parker, would you be able to explain the request from the Gauwenbray for the citizens at a, because we've received the letter, but?
That's right.
Nobody knows what we're talking about. Yeah, thank you. Oh, okay. Councillor Anderson can explain. I'm giving you the mic, councillor Anderson.
What it is, it's a, it's a national tournament for junior golfers. Um, it's a pretty big event. Um, there's going to be about a hundred and fifty-six junior golfers and their families. That's going to be in the area for a solid week. Um, it's a huge recognition for our golf course because it's very difficult to be able to host an event of this caliber. So that just goes to show the caliber of the Gauwenbray Golf Course. So I think the monies that um, the ten thousand dollars is a no-brainer to help them out for sure with this event. It's, it's, it's an event that probably won't come around again.
Okay, yeah, absolutely, absolutely, absolutely. Um, okay, so we have proposals on the table, so we'll have to bring in that, the public meeting next week. So Recommendation for Harvest Fest, three thousand, Snow Bear, ten thousand, Jeu de la Cadie, one thousand, Elvino, one thousand, Chambers Gala, two thousand, Christmas Cocktail for Chamber, two fifty, and the Gauwenbray, ten thousand. Now, do we have any questions? I can tell you, for example, like for Snow Bear, which we've done before, we can do a resolution and commit for three years. And even if the election is next year and a new council comes in, it's in the resolutions we've committed, like we're doing with our students. Uh, for the doctors, like we did with Vitalité at the time. So, um, and again, I, I leave it up to council, you decide. But ten thousand dollars a year for three years, thirty thousand on a half-a-million-dollar equipment is not going to go very far.
No.
That's why at the time I had recommended, you could, again, the decision belongs to you. But we had figured if we could show force, that forty thousand a year for three years, which would bring them. So whenever they apply through funding or programs, you know, they would have a certain amount in that pot to help them, which would help with the fundraising. So I'm putting that out on the table for everyone as well. Councillor Anderson?
Thank you, your worship, and I agree totally with what you're saying. I was going to mention that, that we can pass a resolution that doesn't matter who's sitting on council next time. If, if it's there, it's got to be carried through. So I'm in total agreement with that. I do have a question slash issue with Jeu de la Cadie. And the reason why is, um, we've do- we've given to Jeu de la Cadie. There was two years that we gave to them during COVID when Jeu de la Cadie didn't happen. But we still made the contributions and I'm still questioning where that money went.
Good question.
Do you know what I mean? And I want to say it was five thousand dollars a year that we gave because when we started back in two thousand and sixteen, we had a five-year commitment with Jeu de la Cadie. And that ran through to twenty-twenty-one. So for the year twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one, I'm like ninety-five percent sure that we contributed to Jeu de la Cadie, but we don't know where that money went. I know Ms. Parker has requested information from them and her emails have not been returned. Um, and then it goes to like, again, like I just, I, I have an issue with just supporting certain sporting groups, individual teams and stuff like that. Because for me, it opens a can of worms. Like, I was fine with supporting Jeu de la Cadie back in the day. Because we were supporting the entire organization, helping the entire organization to be able to house the, the, the athletes and stuff like that. So I'm just personally myself, I'm not a hundred percent on board with the thousand dollars. Again, the Jeu de la Cadie, when we have so many monies that are outstanding to the organization itself.
Okay. Um, councillor LeBlanc?
Yeah, I just want to point out that this is for an independent group that what they are doing is to help children that can't afford to go, but are qualifying. So this is not the organization per se.
Where that money went.
Yeah, it has nothing to do really with this, so.
Okay, disagree. Um, so I will start with Harvest Fest. So is council in agreeance with the three-thousand-dollar recommendation? Any questions, any issues on that one? No, okay. Now, we'll go to the uh Bathurst Snow Bears Equipment. Ten thousand dollars personally, I think it's low, but um is council in agreeance with the ten thousand? Are you willing to do a three-year commitment? Feedback on that one? Councillor Knowles?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is coming out of the uh, of the tourism levy?
Yeah, well, basically, we, you know, we have the grants and the tourism and we put funds in there and that's basically what's being used for.
Definitely it fits in that category for sure. That's why, just to be clear, it's coming out of the tourism levy.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, yeah.
Alright, councillor Burnett?
Uh, thanks, Madame. We realize that it's not enough money because piece of gear is five-hundred thousand. But we located already just recently a dump truck, four-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand. So gear is very expensive and they're going to need a lot more money probably from council down the road uh to make this happen. Because we have the best trails in the province and people across the province talk about us, you know. So uh, uh, we realize it's not enough, but it's just there.
Deputy Mayor Willett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think the ten thousand is fine for this year. Then if we come up with the, with the financing for the next three years after that and put it in that way, there at least we know that they'll get their money.
Okay, so you know we're going to do our budget for twenty-twenty-six. We're responsible for that budget. So you're going to wait for them in twenty-twenty-six to come and request in twenty-twenty-six?
Yeah.
Okay. Is everybody in agreeance with that? So we're committing to ten thousand and then we'll ask them to come back and give us an update?
Yeah.
Is it crack, like so? Okay, alright. Um, Jeu de la Cadie, one thousand. So we know that the one thousand dollars is to help children that can't afford, that they qualify for the Jeu de la Cadie, but the parents can't send them, um, or the parents can't pay for hotels. Um, is there any objections for that one thousand dollars? Okay. Chambers Gala, uh, oh, the Elvino, one thousand dollars for Elvino. Any objections? Two thousand dollars. The gala for the two-thousand-dollar um gala, this is something, because I know Bell B is sponsoring one of the, 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 the winners as well. I mean, for a gala that brings over three hundred and it's all about the business community, by sponsoring an entrepreneur, whether it be a plus ten, less than ten, it's uh, it's, it's definitely, no objections there? No, okay. And Christmas Cocktail, two fifty. And ten thousand Gauwenbray, no objections. Alright. We're good. We'll pass this as a resolution next week. Thank you very much. Economic Development Advisory Committee by Chris Legacy. Mr. Legacy, you wanna stay where you are and I'll give you the mic?
Uh, yes, please.
Okay, you're good.
It'd be easier to run through the documents.
Yeah, because there's not a lot of room on that podium to have your documents.
No, if I have to make notes or use the mouse or anywhere.
Yeah. Okay.
Just let me know when everybody has it on their screen, please.
Yeah. Good to go.
Good, perfect. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Okay, so council would have received the last week in the council package, a proposed terms of reference for the Economic Development Advisory Committee. So this piece that we're discussing tonight is a continuation of the exercise we started with redesigning the committee policy. And the idea is to develop similar terms of reference for every committee of council, just that we can have the mandate be very clear, the objectives of the committees, and make sure that the relevancy of these committees is, is good. So what I'll do is, I'm, I'm hoping everybody had a chance to go through it in detail since receiving it, but I, I'd like to go through section by section with you all tonight. Just because I think it's important that we get the first one done, right? Because we're gonna use this as an example for our committee terms of reference going forward. So I will start with the mandate of this group. So the Economic Development Advisory Committee assists the City of Bathurst's administration and council in promoting, supporting, and enhancing economic development or economic activity within the city. The committee's role is to provide advice on economic development matters and serve as a liaison between the public, the business community, and council. The committee has been established by council in accordance with the committee policy under which the following terms of reference have been adopted. Committee members are bound by these terms of reference and all related policies and bylaws, and committee recommendations are non-binding and serve an advisory purpose. For the goals and objectives, the committee, so it's to serve as a liaison between the public, the business community, and council, to hear and consider input from individuals and organizations on matters affecting economic development, convene meetings at council's requests on issues related to cities' economic well-being that require public input, evaluation, and comment, advise on the preparation and maintenance of an overall economic development strategy, including providing council with regular assessments of current economic trends and conditions, promote research and the collection of information relevant to economic development, advise council on the city's strengths, weaknesses, competitive positioning, identify and report systemic barriers encountered by the business community when dealing with the city, presented as what we heard reports, provide guidance on industrial, commercial land requirements, general zoning, and land use policy, municipal infrastructure, marketing strategies, and other city policies or programs that impact economic development, propose initiatives to enhance the city's image and develop amenities related to economic growth, encourage coordination of council's economic development strategy and marketing efforts with the Regional Service Commission, downtown Bathurst, the Chaleur Chamber of Commerce, and other local business and community groups, assess how new development projects may affect the city's economic growth, engage with federal and provincial representatives to stay informed on government policies and programs impacting community development, and finally, to promote public awareness of the roles and responsibilities of municipal government in community and economic development. So before continuing through the document, I'd, I'd like to know if there's any comments or feedback on the mandate and the objectives of this committee. Is everybody in agreeance with what's being proposed? I'll start, I'll start by opening the floor on that piece.
Do we have any questions? Counselor Knowles?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one quick question. With this committee, when it's formed, would they meet monthly or quarterly or as needed or?
It's in there.
We'll discuss that further along in the document. This is really just, is everybody okay with the mandate, the purpose of this committee?
Okay.
And, and kind of what's been identified as goals and objectives. We'll talk about the functioning of the group a little later on, but.
Okay, great.
Okay, to continue?
Okay. Okay, no questions.
So I'm not gonna go through all of this necessarily. I won't read everything, but generally speaking, reporting to council, so the idea would be to have the committee minutes and recommendations included at every council meeting, following their, following their meetings, obviously. Once a year, there would be their annual report on a designated committee night. In terms of meeting procedures, it would follow the same provisions of the regulating proceedings of municipal council. Members of the public and council members who are not appointed to the committee may attend all open meetings, but not participate in the debate unless granted permission through the majority vote of the members present. Committee composition, so I'm proposing, I think, a, a committee composed of up to nine voting members, who meet the eligibility criteria as a good start. Of the voting members, we're recommending that at least one member be a member of council, at least one representative from the business improvement area for downtown, and then at least five members at large. The idea here is that we get a pretty good representation of the business community on this, on this group. We're looking for a diverse group to give, to give feedback and opinions on, on our strategic direction. But of course, council can decide to make just adjustments or modifications at any time to either the number of members on the committee or the makeup of the committee and so forth. The members at large, we're gonna be looking for, again, based on their demonstrated interest and involvement in business matters in the community, academic or technical qualifications, relevant work or volunteer experience, and their professional backgrounds. While members at large are generally business owners or employees within the City of Bathurst, individuals with specialized expertise, not otherwise represented by, by the committee, may also be considered. Desired areas of expertise, it's, it's not an exhaustive list, but we're looking for members of the community that are involved in building and land development, manufacturing, retail, restaurant industry, professional services, tourism, hospitality, and agriculture.
We have a question from Counselor Burnett.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Thanks. I've been part of a committee like this before and really happy to see you going back to the public, going out to the business community and seeing if you can get people in. But you had marked down for nine members and then you go down to list seven. So who are we missing there? A chamber or two counselors or?
No, thank you, Counsel Burnett. It's just, it's just at least, we want to have a minimum of, you can go, after that, you can decide if you want to have more than one member of council to make up the nine, or if you want to have seven members at large. Like, we just want to have a minimum, one counselor, one from the downtown area, and then at least five at large. But then after that, you can decide where you plug in the rest.
Where do you plan to meet with these people? That was a question that was hard to solve last time. Get everybody, because business people are out doing business, and it's hard to get them to leave their business in order to come to a meeting in the middle of the day or whatever. But it seemed to work that we would get them at lunch hour and provide a little lunch and they would, they, they would show up, because they got to eat sometimes during the day. So anyway, maybe that could be looked at. And because of maybe providing a lunch for these business people to come and, you know, give them a little incentive, you're gonna need a budget for this committee. Did you look at that, a budget for putting us together or no?
No budget was allocated specifically at this point, but it's something we could certainly discuss. A little further along on the document, we discussed the meeting frequency and the location. You know, we're leaving some discretion up, up to the committee. If they prefer to do, like noon hour meetings, that's certainly something that the group can discuss. Otherwise, we can continue to do similar to pack meetings where they meet on an evening on a weeknight, or it's, it's really, it's, it's however the committee feels that, you know, they're best able to operate.
We have four business districts in the city, I think. Anyway, maybe it's more, but downtown, St. Peter Avenue, East Bathurst, and maybe up in St. Anne, I don't know, Vanye now or whatever, St. Anne. But it would be nice to get representation from all over those areas rather than just one area and get, get the feel of what's gonna happen next in St. Anne, what's gonna happen next in Vanye, et cetera. So I, I hope we look at that when we're trying to find members to serve on this, this group, that they are spread all over our business and group, and it's working. There's, there's a lot of development in those four areas. Thank you.
Counselor Anderson?
On Counselor Burnett, previous to me sitting on city council, I sat on a couple committees. One of them being, it was an Economic Development Committee, a reduction, what was it called, Donald, do you remember? It was reduction in cost or whatever. I forget what it was called. Anyway, we had it at lunchtime, but as somebody that works during the day, it was really, it didn't work well with people's schedules because everybody works. So to have to come to city hall and take time out, like I have a half an hour for lunch. A lot of people have a half an hour for lunch. So it's inconvenient to come to city hall during the day. And then when you add the lunch on top of it, people spend the forty, the, the hour that you have for the meeting, they spend forty-five minutes eating. And then the city clerk has to clean up afterwards. So like, I personally, like as somebody that was participating on those committees, found that they were more of a hindrance and you didn't get very far with the work that you wanted to do on the committee, because you were pressed for time, because it was noon, you had to get back to the office, you were spending all your time eating, so you didn't get anywhere during the meeting. Hundred percent. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, when I was, when I was elected as councillor, I, one of my committees was during the day at lunchtime. And I will not lie, we spent first ten minutes chatting, twenty minutes eating, forty minutes eating, and then we tried to rush twenty minutes of a meeting before one o'clock, and then everybody left. And I would stay behind and help the city clerk pick up the mess. So I actually, you know, I say it like it is, that's who I am. First thing I stopped was that lunch meeting. We were not having it no more. It was going to be evening meeting at six o'clock. And this would give everybody else time that we would be able, and we were doing it here at city hall. Because you, you have an hour meeting and you're spending twenty minutes to talk about the file at hand, as opposed to focusing on, especially a committee like this one, economic development, these are gonna be minimum two-hour meetings, I can see, right? Depending on certain files. All right.
Great. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Points well taken, Counselor Anderson, and yourself, Counselor Burnett. I think, coming, coming back to the makeup of the voting members, I think we could definitely look, and that's, that's what the, the point of this discussion is for. If, if you'd like to adjust to have representatives from all of our economic corridors, we could certainly adjust that to have some representation there as well. So where are we here?
Deputy Mayor Willet had a question?
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Madam Mayor. The point I want to put is on the, on the membership, membership adjustment.
Oh, yep.
I think it would be wise to put something in there saying that if you're not going to participate, that you're not gonna stay in the committee, because if you can't make it, it's kind of annoying for anybody else who's on the committee that you have somebody that is gonna say he's on the committee and doesn't show up, so.
Yep. Thank you, Counsel, Counsel Willet. There's actually a section.
Yeah, there's a spot.
There's a section in the, in the committee policy that addresses attendance. And I think if it's, they miss three meetings in a year, there's grounds for removing a member from the committee. Yep.
Okay.
Yep. But also, good point. Skills requested, I mean, we'll go through based on, oh, sorry, and the non-voting members, the participants as well. The idea is also to, to try to involve other levels of government as well. So inviting provincial representatives, federal representatives, having the Regional Service Commission come in with, with, with their working on and their strategies to ensure that we're not, we're not duplicating efforts in any way, that, that everybody's kind of aligned on what they're working on. And then, of course, city administration will be there to offer feedback and support as needed to keep, keep the discussion on track or, or whatever it may be. And then finally, the, the administration section is kind of where we talk about the meeting frequency. So again, the, the recommendation here, I, I, I thought, I don't, it depends, but I mean, the group can decide if they want to meet more often, but I was proposing a bi-monthly meeting. Especially if the agendas get, you know, it's not, I, I don't want to let it go too long, the agendas get too, too, too big, but I mean, at the same time, it gives a little bit of time between meetings to actually action or, or do some exploratory work, depending on what the discussion is. And this is something that could be changed at any time. If the committee decides a meeting six times a year isn't enough, they can make the recommendation to council that the terms of reference be amended to go more, more frequent or, or vice versa. If a quarterly meeting is good enough or whatever it may be. So again, we're leaving a little bit of flexibility for the, once the committee is in place to, to make that decision for themselves and how, how they think they can best operate and serve, and serve the needs for, for administration and council.
Counselor Burnett has.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Support staff, are you gonna have somebody from the city there to record? And set the agendas, send the agendas, make sure all the information needed for decisions. Who's gonna do that?
Oh, okay. Hold on, your mic is.
Sorry. Thank you, Counsel Burnett. So that, that, that again is something that's addressed in the, in the, in the committee policy itself. But the C A O gives the direction of which staff is to be in attendance and, and basically the role of, of the, the staff support. But I intend to be at all those meetings, but again, we'll figure out as far as agendas and recording minutes and so on, how, how we, how we do that, you know. Cool. Somebody will be there, though. Yeah. So that, in a nutshell, I guess that, that's, that covers kind of the proposed terms of reference. Again, I'm, I'm happy to go back and revisit either the mandate or the objectives. If anything's not clear, if there's anything that council would like to see added to the, to the mandate of this group, or, you know, do we, do we run with what's, how it's proposed and, and, and make modifications once we get it up and running? But I think it's, it's a great way to start involving the business community a little more and everything we're working on. You know, I think the more opinions and the more feedback we can get, it just, it just helps feed our efforts, so.
Before I go to Counselor Branch, I, I wanted to thank you, and I think I said that last week, you and Amy Lynn, but I know you put a lot of effort in there. This is exactly what we're looking for. We need something more structured, have these committees, you know. And I can't tell you how many times a business owner has told me, you know, we don't feel like we're part of the conversation. Decisions are being made, we're not part of the conversation. And I did say, like, be patient, we're going to have some changes. And I think this is a perfect opportunity to have, you know, business players around the table like they had years ago. But have it structured, have an agenda that's structured, not just have a meeting to say we have a meeting. And the fact that we're gonna move forward with other committees that are our committees, moving forward this way, makes it a lot easier and more of a structured city. So, thank you, great job. And I mentioned it in our city clerk as well, but, and I said it last week, I was so impressed with it. So really good job on you. Counselor Branch?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No questions, just a comment. When you said you were gonna go back and look at, you know, the four different areas or whatever, I wouldn't let that affect the numbers of the committee. Like, I think nine's a good number, right? You have enough people, you have good representation, but it's not too much. It's still a good group to work with. So that, that's all I wanted to mention. Thank you very much.
So, direction to council. Did you want more time to review this before, because we will need to adopt this? You're okay, we start with this one, what's been structured, and then once the committee's in place, then you tweak as we move along? Okay.
If, if I may, Madam Mayor, I just wanted to, just, just to add a little bit of how, how I kind of envision this working to, like, I, I think it's gonna be a great resource for council to leverage as well, like, I think about examples of, like, when we received our housing needs assessment, even being able to delegate a report like that to, to the committee level and have the committee kind of give a summary of pieces like that, or come back with, you know, we read the report, we analyzed the report, we discussed it as a group. You know, here, here are some, some immediate action items, and maybe we recommend council look at. You know, it, it's a way to, to kind of delegate some of the heavier, heavier analysis work, I guess, as well. Another piece that I'll draw attention to that I really liked in this as well was kind of an example I found from, from Calgary, actually, the what we heard reports. I think there's a lot of value in what they do there to try to do process, process improvement. You know, we, we hear it often that, that there may be some frustrations with the, the way certain things work, but I think if, at the committee level, those types of, you know, irritants can be aired and, and discussed and see, like, maybe sometimes it's just a miscommunication, but I think the fact that we can discuss that in a public forum directly with the business community and, and see if there's really something there, what kind of recommendations, or kind of get into a solution mode, what could we propose to council to action or give direction to staff to, 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 to make improvements. So I, I think it could be a really, a really useful tool for, for council going forward. So I'm, I'm happy that there seems to be a good buy-in.
Good. So we have Conseil de Bla?
Merci, Madame Lammeresse. Vous voulez juste renchérir sur ce qu'il disait? Je suis fait à qui il a dit, c'est un peu sûr que, que je voulais même, c'est parce qu'aussi des décisions, on peut prendre des décisions, nous autres comme conseil. Si on peut avoir des argents, des programmes, quoi que ce soit, c'est le fun que ce comité-là va exister. Et qui puisse avoir les discussions avec les développeurs et les entrepreneurs de la région. Après ça, ça nous aide à prendre une décision beaucoup plus éclairée par après, parce qu'il y a des choses qu'on peut pas nécessairement réaliser ou voir. Et avec ce, ce comité ici, moi, quand je l'ai lu, et quand j'étais attendu parler aujourd'hui, c'est une, c'est un des belles accomplissements que ce conseil ici aura, aura accompli. C'est pas nous autres qui l'a créé. Merci, Chris. Merci, Madame Lammeresse, pour avoir emmené ça. Mais c'est vrai que c'est quelque chose de très beau et très nécessaire.
Parfait. Thank you very much. Good job. Um, before we end our meeting, I had a meeting at one o'clock today with uh at the Academy Assomption. Donc j'ai une rencontre à l'école Academy Assomption, député ma Willett était avec moi. Uh deputy mayor Willett was there with me. Minister uh Johnson was there, minister of education, our minister of finance, legacy, uh député Robichaud, um the school district, dont on a rencontre avec la ministre Johnson, ministre d'éducation, uh ministre de finances, député, um ministre legacy, uh député Robichaud, le district scolaire, on a eu des membres du district scolaire qui étaient là aussi francophones. Et um, on a fait la visite de l'école, uh Academy Assomption. Et après la visite, on a eu la chance de s'asseoir et avoir une discussion. Comme vous savez, il y a une grosse décision qui a besoin d'être faite, so a big decision needs to be made whether they are closing the school in June or not. The school district has said that they recommend that we close the school, dont le district scolaire francophone a recommande, comme vous savez, j'étais pas la dernière rencontre, je m'avais blessé le dos, dont député maur uh Willett était là pour moi. Qu'est-ce que je vais apporter attention aux citoyens de Bathurst? Um, c'est, ça fait au-delà de vingt ans. Qui a à peine des fonds qui a été mis dans cette école-là. So for the last twenty years, there's barely anything, if not thirty years, that's been put in the school system. Dans les dernières cinq années, si je compare avec certain écoles, qu'ont reçues cinq cent soixante quinze mille en vingt vingt-et-un, vingt vingt-deux, trois cent mille en vingt vingt-deux, vingt vingt-trois, trois cent cinquante mille en vingt vingt-quatre, vingt vingt-cinq. Euh, huit mille cinq cents en vingt vingt vingt-et-un, cent se- cent quatre-vingt-mille en vingt vingt-quatre, vingt vingt-cinq. Euh, honnêtement, je peux pas vous dire comment déçu que je suis de voir que ils ont resté l'école d'aller au point que c'est maintenant. Au point que ça nous prendrait à peu près onze point sept millions, euh que ce soit du gouvernement provincial, fédéral, peu importe, euh ou le district scolaire. À l'Academy Assomption, ils ont dép- ils ont dépensé dix-neuf mille en dix- deux mille dix-neuf, deux mille vingts. Vingt-cinq mille en vingt vingt, vingt vingt-et-un, euh dix mille en vingt vingt-et-un, vingt vingt-deux, euh vingt vingt-deux, vingt vingt-trois, cinquante mille parce que ils ont resté la trappe ouverte puis ils ont eu du dommage dans le toit. J'ai contacté euh le directeur de l'association, l'association acad- académique de Nouveau-Bretagne, dont la S A N B, euh monsieur Ali Chesson, pour discuter avec lui, mais je suis tellement mécontente. On va fermer une école francophone dans la région qui vont amener les jeunes de East Bathurst qui vont probablement aller à Terry Fox dans une école anglophone euh au lieu de à Cité de l'amitié. Ils disent qu'il y a amplement de place à Cité de l'amitié. Je ne suis pas convaincue qu'il y a de la place à Cité de l'amitié. J'ai été dit de pas perdre mon énergie et mon temps, essayer de sauver l'école Academy Assomption puis de me concentrer sur d'autres choses. So I've been told not to lose, do- don't bother spending all your time and your effort to save that school, you should be working on other files. I completely disagree. Je suis complètement en désaccord. J'ai demandé, euh j'ai envoyé une lettre, j'ai envoyé deux lettres, j'ai demandé à ministre, um Johnson de nous donner une année, au moins une année. Please give us one year. On verra qu'est-ce qu'on a mesure de faire, placer un comité en place. Mais j'ai été dit, même si qu'on l'a, même si qu'on a été donné une année, il y a pas de fond. There is no money to be spent in that school. We are not part of the top five priorities or six priorities in other schools. On sera pas parmi les priorités des six hôtes écoles. Ils sont limités dans le budget de qu'est-ce qu'ils peuvent dépenser. Euh je comprends. Écoute, le gouvernement a besoin de faire, qu'est-ce qu'ils ont besoin de faire? Mais tu sais, on a discuté du boiler system. Les fonds auraient dû avoir été donnés à cette école pendant des années, mais ils n'ont rien reçu. Et ma discussion avec le district scolaire, que oui, en vingt vingt-et-un, quand j'ai été élue comme maire, j'ai été approchée pour demander si la ville de Bathurst pourrait construire un centre communautaire à East Bathurst, puis on pourrait louer des espaces au district scolaire francophone. La discussion, cette discussion était faite avec l'ancien maire avant mon temps, on a quelques conseillers qui siégeaient dans le temps. Et on avait à peine un budget pour opérer la ville de Bathurst, financièrement, on ne pouvait pas. Quand j'ai rencontré le district scolaire, quand j'ai été élue, je leur ai dit que dans ce mandat-ci, dans les prochains quatre, dans le temps quatre, mais cinq ans en cause de la réforme, que c'était pas dans notre mandat, ça l'était pas. Transport commun, le moulin, on avait tellement des gros dossiers. Puis de construire un centre communautaire à East Bathurst n'était pas, pour nous, c'était non. Vingt vingt-six, vingt vingt-trente, peut-être, on sait jamais, mais dans ce mandat-ci, non. Je suis très déçue. Puis ils m'ont dit, ben on a seulement soixante et deux élèves. A Bertrand. Puis écoute, je veux être clair, je, je, j'attaque pas une autre école, une autre région, je ne parle pas de d'autres régions. Mais je parle de l'école. A Bertrand, l'école a été construite en même temps que l'Academy Assomption. Et cette école a l'air comme une école neuve, flamme en neuve. Ils ont soixante-seize élèves de maternelle à huitième année, soixante-seize. À Bocaraquet, maternelle à huitième année, soixante-treize élèves. Il y a plusieurs écoles dans la région qui est en bas de cent élèves. Academy Assomption, on a de zéro à cinquième année avec soixante-deux. Mais on a des parents que si l'école aurait eu les fonds, que leurs enfants auraient probablement été à l'école de cité, euh de, de Academy Assomption. Mais les parents les déposent à Cité de l'amitié parce qu'il y a pas de transport d'autobus. Je vais vous dire que, j'attends. Je sais que ministre Johnson a une grosse décision à faire puis je porte pas blâme à personne. Mais je peux vous dire que j'ai aucune intention de lâcher ce dossier-là et de me concentrer sur d'autres choses. Je pense que je peux me concentrer sur plus qu'un dossier en même temps. Euh. Député ma Willett était là avec moi à la rencontre. Euh on aimerait une, une option de possibilité. On a deux écoles primaires anglophones dans la ville de Bathurst et je pense qu'on a de la place pour deux écoles primaires francophones dans la ville de Bathurst. Donc, um, j'ai à avoir une autre discussion avec le directeur de la S A N B, monsieur Chesson. Et um, je m'attends d'avoir une rencontre de nouveau avec les parents très bientôt. Je comprends la décision de la province puis qu'ils ont des décisions difficiles. Mais si il y aurait eu des fonds qui auraient été placés dans l'école Academy Assomption, on serait pas rendu à la situation qu'on est maintenant. Et ça, je vais blâmer tout le monde. Pas la municipalité. Les gens qui sont impliqués dans cette école dans la dernière cinq années ont pas concentré une scène sauf le minimum qui a besoin d'être fait. Puis j'ai envoyé la présentation à tout le conseil. Vous avez la chance de voir l'argent qui a été placé dans les autres écoles, rien dans notre école, à, à Cademy Assomption. Ça fait non, je lâcherai pas le dossier. C'est la seule chose que j'aimerais rajouter à ce point-ci. Conseil le blanc?
Oh, madame Lamarrès, je voudrais commencer à vous dire merci. Merci de défendre cette école francophone, qui est très nécessaire pour la région. Euh, de votre avis, je comprends, situation, euh la province, ça doit faire, qu'est-ce qu'elle a à faire? Malheureusement, oui, ça aurait été fun, car il y a eu de l'investissement des années au préalable, qu'il a eu vingt ans de multiples gouvernements provinciaux pour faire quelque chose. Je voudrais juste aussi, euh, emmener sur le sujet, que c'est quelque chose là, que c'est la ville. C'est la ville qui doit défendre cette école ici, c'est la ville qui doit faire ce travail. Euh, c'est, c- c'est nullement un mandat d'une municipalité, c'est un mandat purement provincial.
Mm-hmm.
Et euh, pour moi, c'est ça la déception là-dedans, c'est que c'est vous qui êtes obligé de vous lever et des, et et de vous battre pour que un école francophone demeure ouverte dans la région. Fait que sur ça, encore une fois, merci.
Merci. Councillor Burnett?
Uh thanks, Madam Mayor. Thanks for being there and um listening to those people. The information you gave us today, uh the, I read both articles on both parents that put, what a, what a presentation they put together, unbelievable. A couple of parents took about time and had the ability to put the two presentations that we were given.
Mm-hmm.
And uh, you know, uh, the reason I could read those presentations is because I went to that school. And uh that, that's a long time ago, mind you. But uh anyway, uh that, that school has helped a lot of people like me to be able to get up in the morning and read the Cadieux Nouvelles or to listen to conversations. I know I worked in English all my life, but that stayed with me because I went to that school at the beginning.
Mm-hmm.
So um, uh I hope something can be done, the letters were well put together, and I hope the minister listens. Thank you.
I hope so. I've asked us to get, I, I've asked the minister Johnson to give us one year, but I was told as clear as day, you've got one year, what are you gonna do? Well, we'll put a committee together, we'll see what we can do, try to work on the file. But basically, I've been told, fine, but there's no money to give you. We have no money to give you in a year from now. So, you know, whether we approach the federal government, um you know, we use green initiatives, we don't have to put eleven point seven million dollars in that school tomorrow. Let's start w- working on what's needed. You know, there's space available, they could rent for an after-school program for, for, for another daycare that could be there, there would be a, a source of revenue. We could try to come up with solutions to try to keep the school. But it's discouraging when you're told, fine, you've got one year, if, 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 not saying they're giving us, if you get a year, you better, you better come up with a, a, a plan, but we have no money to give you. So it's, um, c'est très 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 décevant, je vais être honnête avec vous, c'est très décevant. Puis, um, if, if we let that school close, I mean, my family's from East Bathurst. I know a lot of people from East Bathurst. And um, I think that the school district had their mind already made up, even way back when, when they tried to close it, because back when, if they knew, knowing what they know, I don't believe the effort was put for our school compared to some of the other schools based on the presentation that I provided you. So um, let's, let's wait and see what's going to happen. Mais non, je resterais pas silenc, puis non, je vais me concentrer sur ce dossier-là en même temps que je vais me concentrer sur d'autres dossiers. Donc merci d'être avec nous ce soir. Thank you for being with us uh this evening, et bonne soirée.